The Lindbergh Schools Board of Education Special Workshop 1557 is now called to order. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Matt?
Second.
Second by Kristi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. All right, we will move to 4.01 Lindbergh School District Assessment Report. Dr. Sparks?
All right, I'm happy to be joined by the Teaching and Learning Team as they come up to the tables and help to share some of this information. As you all know, in April of each year, we have the Learning Report, which really focuses on our district's success measures, our social-emotional learning, personalized learning, the four Cs, student satisfaction, kind of those things that are more, if you talk about data, are more qualitative in nature. And tonight, our focus really is to talk about the quantitative data of our student learning. So this gives another layer to what learning outcomes look like within Lindbergh as we talk through our kindergarten through ninth grade assessments and then go into some of our high school assessments as well. So if you go to the next slide, I really want to frame this by talking about how we look at this data as a baseline. As you know, from our April workshop, we, I think it was April, maybe it was May, and talking about our compass goals for this upcoming school year, really focusing in on that 80% or greater, we don't want to limit ourselves to 80%, of students meeting the average or above-average quintiles in our NWEA MAP growth, and then really focusing on that third-grade reading data that we are ensuring that our kids are reading at levels that are proficient. So 80% plus of our third-grade students who are considered low-risk, because that's the indicator that's on the assessment, in both FastBridge A-reading and CBM assessments. And it's important that both of those are paired together because as we talk about the skill sets that we develop in students, we want to make sure that that development is even, that as we focus on foundational elements of reading, we are also continuing with the work around building comprehension and background knowledge, vocabulary, et cetera, to make a holistic reader. So those are our goals to kind of frame the work that we're going to talk about from the data in this last school year. Some things to keep in mind with regard to this data, this is our fourth year of using FastBridge assessments, so we began in the 1819 school year, then continued in 1920 where we had incomplete data due to the pandemic, and then over the last two years. This is our second year with NWEA MAP Growth Assessment, and then our first year with the I-Ready assessments that we use in elementary math. So that kind of helps to frame like the trajectory of the work that we've been doing. And while we never want to focus the data around the pandemic, we also can't ignore that there have been significant impacts with regard to student learning, not just within Lindbergh, but nationally, internationally, really. In fact, there was recently just an article released that showed NWEA was reporting that they're seeing an up to 10% increase in the variance of students' testing. So they're seeing greater spread of students' test scores than they've ever seen before. We're also seeing upwards of 12 percentage points, percentile point decrease nationally in some of the data. So that is something that we have to frame and keep in mind as we're looking at where Lindbergh, where Lindbergh performance is. All of our data that we are sharing with you tonight is based on pre-pandemic norms. So as we're looking at the data and we're looking at where Lindbergh students are, these are norms that were set in either 2019 or 20 prior to the pandemic. And then, again, going to this idea of baseline, we're going into this next school year with the expectation that we're going to be able to return to the professional learning that we have done in the past, things like horizontal and vertical teams in order to have that alignment both among the levels of teachers, but also then between grade levels to get back to some of those processes that we haven't been able to do because of limited access to subs and so forth. So I will say that we thought that that would be the case last year as well, and you know, had to use Dr. Lake's favorite word pivot a bit, but really looking forward to this year and being able to get our typical trajectory back. And with that being said, I'm going to start off by introducing Dr. Jill Lawson, who is our Executive Director of Assessment and Student Services. She is going to go through the assessments and what the metrics mean, and then followed by her will be Dr. Craig Hamby, Executive Director of Elementary, to talk about elementary data, and then Dr. Ronnie Segura to talk about secondary as the Executive Director of Secondary Education. So this point, next slide, please.
Okay, well, thank you so much for your remarks.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm excited to be here and share a little bit about our assessments in Lindbergh schools and how we measure academic monitoring. So just to share with you the three assessment platforms that we use, I-Ready, as Tara stated, is our very first, this is our very first year using this assessment, and we administer it to students K through three in mathematics. FastBridge is a reading screening tool that we use K through three to measure early reading skills, and we, like Tara stated, started using that in 2018, 19. And then NWEA is an assessment tool that we use for students fourth through eighth grade in mathematics and fourth through ninth grade in reading, and the ninth grade just began administering that assessment this year. Next slide. This particular slide is here for your reference. On it, you'll see the grade level for kindergarten through third grade reading assessments, the actual tests within the platform that we use to administer to that particular grade level, the window in which we administer it, and the description of what is actually measured within that tool. So for kindergarten through first grade, you'll see that we administer early reading. We do that for first grade in fall, winter, and spring, and this past year in kindergarten, it was in winter and spring only. But I just want to share that in 2022, '23, we will be administering it to kindergartners, fall, winter, and spring. Students in first through third grade participate in CBM reading, so we'll have assessment data to share with you on that. And then second and third grade participate in A-reading and auto-reading. So you can refer back to this as we move through data. Because we use three different assessment platforms when trying to design the visualization for you, I wanted to have some consistency throughout. So on each of the particular assessment grade level, I guess the data that we share, I wanted to have the mean score for Lindbergh schools in 2022 in comparison with the assessment platform's mean score. And within that, I put 2019 for FastBridge because that's when the benchmark and norms were published, and the same for I-Ready was also 2019. So you'll be able to see when those are. Because for NWEA, their benchmark and norms were published in 2020, so just so you could see the particular year. But as Dr. Sparks mentioned, they were all published prior to the pandemic. And also, within those particular assessment platforms, each of those display a performance level. And for consistency, I use the term performance level, but depending on the platform, it may be considered a risk level, a placement level, and in NWEA, they refer to it as the quintile level. So, but for consistency, tonight, we're going to have those titled performance level. So within FastBridge, we have high risk, some risk, low risk, and college pathway. And then, because I-Ready, and Dr. Hamby will explain this more, is, I guess, displays their data in more of where students fall in accordance to where they should be by the end of the year. It is more of a placement level for students. So that is where we are going, that is how you will see all of the charts throughout this presentation. Next slide. So we are going to take a satellite view of our data. But as we look at it through a satellite view, I wanted to just take you for a moment, just one slide into what we are actually doing within our district to monitor student growth. So we can look at percentages and means and comparisons, but within those numbers are individual students who are working very hard and teachers who are also working very hard to help students grow from where they come in at the beginning of the year and where they leave us at the end of the year, and so on throughout their experience at Lindbergh schools. So I wanted to give you an example of a data wall. This is just a small clip of a data wall for early reading, composite score. And looking at individual students' scores, where they started in this particular one in the winter and where they ended in the spring, just to see that, we can look at colors, the green obviously illustrating low risk, yellow illustrating some risk, and red here illustrating high risk. And that is one way to look at data. But there's also numbers within those colors of where students go from where they start with us and where they end, and just to show you the growth that is happening for our particular students. When it does happen, it needs to be recognized and celebrated, and when it doesn't happen, it needs to be acknowledged and addressed as well. So one of the things, looking at this, I know our teachers have done a great job doing, and we'll continue to reinforce this through professional learning and just opportunities to sit down and talk to teachers about their data, is really getting our students involved in setting goals, helping our teachers think about setting goals for their classroom, and then also from the district level, how are we setting goals, as Tara mentioned on the very first slide, of where do we want our students to be to know that our programs and the things we have in place are effective. So that is just one of the things I wanted to share about our early reading composite. Also on there, I'm so sorry if you could go back, also on there, I have that 89% of our students in first grade with IEPs show growth in early reading from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. And that is actually a really great thing. That is something to definitely recognize and celebrate. However, you won't always see that represented when you're looking at a satellite view of where our students are from high risk, low risk, and some risk. So I think that is one of the things that we need to acknowledge. But I'm also going to have a big however in there. And one of the things that we also have to acknowledge is that our students who are struggling require aggressive growth to ever move out of a particular performance level. So a student, a student who has an IEP, or maybe doesn't even have an IEP, but a student who is performing with some indicators of risk, has to have the attention and the understanding teachers that we have to be very aggressive. Acceleration is the key because as we move through the assessment windows, the benchmark keeps rising and rising and rising. So if students are not provided with appropriate interventions involved in the, I guess, the setting goal process for themselves, and also given that opportunity to celebrate when they are showing growth, we're going to continue to see our students stay within the same risk levels even if they are showing growth throughout the year. So I'm kind of celebrating and also saying the need for accelerated growth and being aggressive is a need, or students will never move out of those particular risk levels, performance levels. So I'm going to turn this now over to Dr. Hamby to share.
Do you guys have any questions for Jill before he gets into specific stuff about just our program assessments? Okay.
Was yellow, what was that?
For that particular data wall that I had up, that was some risk.
Some risk.
Mm-hmm.
So was red, green, yellow?
Yes.
And some risk may be like there's one deficit skill that exists that we need to remediate. High risk generally is there's multiple skills that need some specific attention.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to start with kindergarten. The next 67 slides are mine. So sit back, relax. Just 67, they cut out some of mine. So kindergarten early reading, so this is a test that's going to measure some very specific skills. We have four sub-skills that we're looking at, they're kindergarten readers. And what we have on there in the top graph is you have our winter scores and then our spring scores, and you have, green is Lindbergh, and the gray is the national average. So, and that's the FastBridge national norm from 2019. So it's not all kids across the nation, it's just those schools who are using FastBridge, and it's their norming from when they did 2019. So when you look at it, we grew 14.12 points over the year, and the national norm was 15.28. So we were off the pace, just 1.16 points, which, not horrible, but at the bottom, that's one where we want to do better on that bottom one. And as you can see, the good news on the bottom graph is you look at the spring graph, and we have 44% of our kids are in the low risk where we want to be in the green. The previous year's kindergartners had only 38 there. And at the bottom, where we're at 16 in the high risk where we don't want to be, previous year, we had 19 there. So while it doesn't look great comparison to the fall, when we compare it to the year before, moving in the right direction. What I want to say with that is, and kind of to go along with what Jill said on the last slide, that's just the satellite view. So what we have to do, and you're going to hear me say this several times tonight, is a deeper dive into the data. So when I see those 16% in the red, I need to know what's going on. I need to know what's happening with those kiddos. So we have to dig in and find out, okay, who are those kids, what services are they receiving, and exactly what skills were they deficient in. So the first thing that Sarah Volter and I did, when we got the spring scores, I was like, oh, it's, there's got to be a trend. There's got to be one of those skills that we were deficient on. Word segmenting is tough for those kindergarten kids. I bet it was that. Let's see if that was the case. There were absolutely no trends or patterns that we could discover whatsoever. It was one class had done well at this, another class did well at this, one building did well here, another building did well here. So I said, well, let's look at the pilot classrooms versus the classrooms are using our traditional materials. No difference. It's just no patterns or trends. So it's almost classroom by classroom, kid by kid, we have to dig in and see what we can do, which is fine. We're into responsive teaching. We want to meet the kids where they are and do the best we can for them. So we dig into it like that. It's easier if it's like, oh, we just got, everyone has to do better at word segmenting. Well, there were no easy answers for us this time around. So when I say the deeper dive, we'll get into that 16%, and we look and find out, okay, exactly what skills, which kids need what skills, and then we have to have conversations with teachers like, okay. And it's not anything where we say, hey, we didn't do well enough. It's like, we didn't do as well as we expected. What do we think we need to change? How can we serve these kids? We also need to look. If we got some kiddos that are down there and they're hitting some yellow and red boxes, it's okay. Do they have all the services they need? You know, are we providing enough support for these kids? We don't want anyone to slip through under our radar or through the net. We want to make sure we're consistently looking at this data to keep up with them. But also in that deep dive, and kind of back to what Jill said on the previous slide, even though they're in the red in the satellite view, we can't live and die just in these risk levels. Because we could dig into that 16%, those red kids, and I bet you, almost 100% of them showed growth over the year. They were better at the end of the year than when they walked in the door with us at the beginning of the year. Now, they didn't keep the pace we wanted them to keep, but they grew. They became better readers. But where I can use that to say, hey, these kids are still learning, I'm going to use it against myself because I also have to check those 44% of kids in the green, did they also grow? Because I can't just let them say, oh, this kid could read when he comes in. I don't have to do anything with him. No, everybody has to grow. And we'll talk a little bit about, so one of the things that I kind of kept track at across the graphs and the charts is high growth and high performance. So you're going to hear me say sometimes like, we outperformed the national average, and we also outgrew the national average. So I'm kind of was looking at both for our performance, but also our growth. So I'm going to, it's going to be a recurring trend because we're always looking for that growth. Sometimes we didn't keep the pace we wanted to. Sometimes we just got to get in there and make sure that all those kids are growing, and sometimes the difference between being red and green might be three points. Might be one skill, just a few points, and all of a sudden, you went from high risk to you're on track. But you have to dig deep into the data sometimes to find out exactly what we have to do there.
Can I interrupt with one question? All right, so I think you're going to tell me that I need to wait until we get to those graphs you were just talking about. Because when I look at this, I don't see any growth. It's hard, you don't see growth. Because it looks like the kids who were green fell to yellow and everybody else stayed the same. And so are you going to tell me that I need to look and see each individual kid and where they went?
No.
And I understand this?
Colin, can we slide to the left and go back one slide? All right, so in this one, gives us a good example. So that student, if you look in the blue box, the student who was a 52 in the winter in green, hey, celebrate their low risk. But then when we get to spring, they're 63. Oh, no, they've gone backwards. They're yellow. They actually grew. They went from 52 to 63. So they actually made academic growth. But they fell in that risk level because they didn't keep the pace we wanted them to keep. So yes, we didn't keep the pace we wanted to keep, but it's not like they actually went backwards. It's not like they didn't grow. There was growth. Or if you look at the side box, that top bar that's all red for that kiddo from fall, winter, and spring, they started at 21, and they went to a 43. I mean, they doubled their score. They didn't keep the pace that FastBridge has set, like these are our benchmarks. We didn't do that. And that's what Jill said, sometimes we have to look for aggressive growth, and we have to surround these kiddos with whatever support we can to create that aggressive growth. But it's not like there was no growth. But I think when you just look at the colors, sometimes you think, oh, there's no growth at all. Or you might think they went backwards. They didn't keep the pace, but they were growing. Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Colin, slide to the right. Two? Sure.
Side note, not just about the data, would be, does FastBridge look and see how many kids had preschool before the kindergarten, or is it just about this assessment? Can we do kind of a comparison on that sometime? Not like next year?
We can do anything you want.
I can answer that.
I'm just curious.
I can answer that. FastBridge does not monitor that?
Yeah.
That would be something we would do internally.
But I, yeah, I'm not asking for each student. I'm just asking for an overall, like, one sentence statement of...
Well, and I can tell you, we have not collected that in the past. This school year with this kindergarten enrollment was the first time we asked, which preschool did you attend?
Awesome.
And we did that to help with our recruitment for kindergarten warm-up, to do some more, you know, preliminary school skills for kindergarten readiness. So that is something we, while we wouldn't have it for this year's data, we can go back, or we can look at that as we look at next year's kindergarten class to see those correlations.
Awesome. Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, the next slide, we have first grade early reading. So this is a very similar one to the kindergarten one we just looked at, and kind of similar results. We didn't, we were off the pace, 3.08 points. And then you look at the bottom, we, our risk levels were not where we wanted them to be at the end of the year. So this is one that Dr. Volter and I and the elementary principals, we kind of dug deep into this, and we ended up into individual classrooms trying to locate, you know, exactly, you know, there were no big patterns and trends, just like the kindergarten data. So it's like, we got to dig deeper and deeper till we can find out exactly, you know, what can we do better? And this is an area where we're going to have to do that. So when these kiddos are heading into second grade, we have to look at their fall scores in second grade, identify exactly what are the skills we need to focus on, what kids do we need to surround with support, so we can get these numbers up to the success levels we want for these kiddos. Next slide, Colin. Cohorts, this is kind of looking at the kiddos who are in first grade this year. If you look at the top of the chart, where they were in winter, 26% were in high risk. When they were in kindergarten, the first time they took this, 26% high risk. And at the end of first grade, those, we had reduced that down to 15. So I said, we're not where we want to be, but where they started and where they ended the first grade, we're moving in the right direction. Not exactly at the pace we want, but we are moving in the right direction. Second grade A-reading. So A-reading is an adaptive test. So this one's going to be, depending upon how kiddos perform.
Greg, we got a question.
Oh, sorry.
Does first grade take the CBM reading?
Yes.
CMB reading? Is that not...
They only take it at the end of the year. So they don't take it all the time.
Okay, so there's no, thank you.
I can also add that the CBM reading score is in the composite. It's part of the early reading assessment, so it's within their composite score.
So second grade A-reading there. This one, we can, if you look at the graph, so this is the first time we outperformed the national mean, and we also outgrew. So we outpaced them. We were growing at a higher rate, and we actually outperformed them by 8.28 points. And then if you look at the bottom with the risk levels, a nice thing to look at, and this is just a satellite view, we of course always dig deeper, but it's nice to look that we cut the high risk in half from 17 to 9% with the second grade A-reading. So that's one of the tests. Now, what's important when we get into second grade and third grade is they're going to take A-reading, which is a kind of an overall, and it's an adaptive test. They're going to take auto-reading, which is very specific skills, and then they're going to take the CBM. So when we look at kids, it's great to celebrate the success of one, but we have to triangulate that data and look at all three of those tests to make sure, you know, exactly where our needs with these kids. So the second one is second grade CBM reading. So this one, we were, a lot of these are almost like what I want to call a push, because we are right at a point or under a point or just over a point with the growth. So we were just off the pace, 1.04 points from the national mean, but we did outperform the national mean. We didn't grow at the same rate, but we were above them the whole time. And if you look, we went from 17 to six in our high risk, so we cut our high risk by two-thirds on that test. Then this next slide is the CBM cohort. So one kind of point I want to look at, when you look at the high risk to the, from the winter of first grade to the spring of second grade, it went from eight to six. But I'd rather look over and celebrate that in the spring of '21, '22, these second graders, 82% of them were in the low-risk category where we want them.
It's low risk plus college pathway.
It's low risk plus college pathway. But that's where we want. We want to be in that column.
The high-risk category goes from nine to 18 between the spring and the summer. Do you just think, is there a reason for that? I mean, is it just a summer slide, or is this just tested at a time that...
It's a slightly different test. You know, it's a first grade test to a second grade test. Kids have been off school for a little bit. We hit it. I think it's a factor of multiple things. But it's always, it's nice to look kind of how they were one year to where they grow the next year, and look at those multiple years of cohorts. But it's always important also to look at, within one year, how did we do?
Julie, it may also be a different students enrolling in our district, too. Though we're looking at it through a cohort, there are variables such as kids enrolling or leaving the district that kind of can trigger some numbers to go one way or another as well.
All right, next slide is our, I think it's our last second grade slide here, auto-reading. So this one's the one that's a test on very specific skills. We outperformed the national mean. We were .25 of a point, so one quarter of a point off the pace. And then our celebration down here at the bottom is that we have 77% in that low risk and college pathway. And Dr. Volter and I believe, if you look at the column with the fall, that only had 1% in high risk, we think there was something wrong, an anomaly there. We're not buying that, that there was only 1% in the fall in the high risk. We think something was incorrect with that. But if it would have been in the spring, and I said, no, that's correct, that's exactly what it was. But it didn't work out that way. But we're still very happy with the 77%. Still a little work to do, but on the right track there. Next slide, we move into third grade A-reading. So this one, once again, we outperformed the national mean, and we were .35 of a point off the pace. And then at the bottom, if you look, it's kind of a, this is another one where I say we have to triangulate and take a deep dive because it's kind of a push. We went from our numbers of the bottom two quadrants there, the 22 and 10 to 20 and 12, it's not the growth we want. So that's where, okay, we didn't, you know, data's data. Sometimes it's, you can't get too high with the highs and too low with the lows. You just have to respond to it. So when we have some of this, like, ah, that's not exactly what we wanted, next year, we have to figure out, why was that, and what can we do? How can we make that better? So that's, this is one third grade A-reading where I take a deeper look at.
Dr. Hamby?
Yes.
Can you, I'm sorry if you're repeating yourself, can you explain to me one more time exactly what the college pathways section means?
Do you want to do that, Jill?
Sure. So it's really, should be titled advanced, and that's really what it is. I mean, I think it's a little off for looking at students in K through three and using that term college pathway. It's something that FastBridge uses, but we'll be changing it to advanced for next year so that I think it's a better way to describe where students are.
Thank you.
And it's pretty much students who are performing at the 85th percentile or higher.
All right, let's see. Am I on, did I skip one here? Am I on third grade CBM? Is that correct? Okay, third grade CBM. So CBM is the one where the kiddos are going to read a passage, and there'd be some comprehension, accuracy, and fluency that we're measuring with the CBM curriculum-based measurement. So this one, we were 5.43 points off that growth, the pace of growth we wanted to have. But at the bottom, if you look, we only have 5% of our students in the high-risk column. So it didn't quite keep the pace we wanted, but they came in pretty good, and we cut our high risk in half still in third grade. And then our next slide is a cohort. So this is one, it's like, okay, our high risk from when the kids were in winter of first grade all the way to the spring of second, 3% in high risk, which we were doing well. This is finally when we started, like, our phonemic awareness and our phonics was, we had gotten those programs into the classrooms, and we're doing those things and trying to address the needs that we had. COVID hit, took a step back. We finally feel like we're back, you know, with that 3% to 5%, 87% to 85%. It's a little bit off, but we finally feel like we've gotten back to where we were before with our, with our reading results. I do want to point out that the fall, when these kids were in fall of second grade, when they came back from the COVID break at 19% high risk, and then now they're back to just 5% high risk. when they came back from the COVID break at 19% high risk, and then now they're back to just 5% high risk. Third grade auto reading. So this one, we once again outperformed the national average, and our pace on the growth, we were just off .61 points. Not a great deal of change at the bottom, but once again, 80% of the kids are in the, the green category that we want them to be. So always when we're seeing those 80s, pretty happy with that. All right, then we're going to move into some math assessments. This is I Ready. So I Ready Classroom Mathematics is our new math program we adopted last year. So it's our first year with the program. Teachers got training last summer, and they implemented the program this year. Brand-new for everyone. It's a little different. The pace of it's a little slower, and sometimes the teachers, they want to go a little faster with it, and I was trying, no, no, that's not what it's meant to do. We've got to take our time and really build number sense. That's what, why we chose this one. So they have a diagnostic test that we give three times over the school year. Kindergarten does not give the, the fall, when we wait till winter before we just inundate these kindergartners with assessments. But we're going to use kind of the same kind of graphs we did for the I Ready math as we did with the FastBridge reading. So in kindergarten, we did, so these are once again the 2019 national norms for FastBridge. Next slide, Kellen, I'm sorry. Mr. Davic, next slide. Thank you. Versus our first year in it. So I want to go to the bottom. I think it tells, the, the top, it doesn't look like there's a lot of difference, but the bottom, you see our kindergarten students, the beginning, or in the winter, 51% of them were on grade level on target, and we upped that to 77% by the end of the year. And as we move into first grade, we outperformed and outgrew the national mean, and then we took our 12% on grade level in first grade at the beginning of the year to 64%.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Like, one level, it says, you know, less than one level, less than two, or what does, is a level a grade level?
It is, but it's somewhat deceiving, because if you're above, you're going to see when we get into second grade, now you can be more than a grade level above. And you could be just slightly, you know, one concept, one month, one unit above, and you'll be in that high level. And the same thing goes with the yellow. You might just be like one unit below where you're supposed to be, but you dropped from the green to the yellow. So it's, once again, not too high with the highs, not too low with the lows. It just keeps, lets us keep kind of a temperature of where our kiddos are. And once again, always looking to have as many as we can in the green and as few as possible in the red is always the goal.
Thank you.
All right, so that was first grade. Let's move on to second grade. So second grade, at the top, we outperformed the national mean. And if you look at the bottom, we went from 16% on grade level to 67% on grade level throughout the year. And as we get into third grade, we outperformed, and we slightly, ever so slightly, less than one point, but we did outpace the national mean. And then if you look, we went from 16% on grade level to actually 61%, because we have 59 that are on grade level, plus 2% that are more than a grade level above in third grade. So from 16 to 61 on grade level there. Now, that was the end of our, kind of the data that looks the same. So I have some, I put in some bonus slides, because I know you guys like bonus slides. And this is some information that I Ready shares. I meet with them quarterly, and they share information with me. So that was interesting. So I want to start with a column that's on the far right, and that's our Lindbergh data at the end of the year. So it's our Lindbergh Spring data. The column that's in the middle is the national average. So you can kind of look at how we performed at Lindbergh versus the middle column is how all other schools are using I Ready performed. But the column on the far left is the pre-pandemic or the 2019 national average. So we're kind of always looking at that one. How are we comparing to that one? So if we go to the next slide, Kellen, you can look at, here's our different grade levels as we go across. And what I wanted to point out is that kindergarten first and second, we outperformed the pre-pandemic national norm. Not even comparing to what other schools are doing this year. We outperformed the levels of 2019. Third grade and fourth grade were pretty much equal to the pre-pandemic, and fifth grade was the only one that was a little bit off pace, but barely. So I thought it was interesting data to share.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
These are, these are norms for the, the districts that use I Ready. Do we know anything about what kind of districts those are, where they are? Because I would think that if you were to look at a true national norm, I would want Lindbergh to be higher. But if you're looking at I Ready and the schools that use it and the districts that use it are similar to Lindbergh, then it makes more sense that we're matching it. So do we have, do we have that kind of information?
It is going to be far and wide. It's a nationwide program used in school districts that are going to be urban, suburban, rural, affluent, not affluent. It's, it's a pretty good cross. Same thing with FastBridge, our process, same thing.
With NWEA, I think they use like, in their study, they use like 8.3 million students. I mean, it was like so many students from all, I mean, from all over. So it, it's like, I can only speak for the NWEA study. I haven't done the I Ready study in the same way, but it's so many students all over, and then they throw, they throw everybody in the, in that particular bell curve, so.
I think your point is really valid, because that's not where we see ourselves either. We don't see Lindbergh as, as performing at the national norms. And I think that's what this slide highlights so well, is right now, no one's performing at the national norm. So the fact that we are performing at the national norm shows the acceleration that we're able to do during the last couple of years. So we should see, as this kind of evens out and we, we mitigate those skills and those, those opportunities for kids that they still need, that we accelerate past those national norms.
And I don't want the point to be lost, that with the hard work of the teachers and those kiddos that love math, because all kids love math, right? That this was our first year using this program, and, you know, we're right there with everyone in the first year. I, I think we're only going to get better. And also, the kids are in this that are, you know, down there in second grade right now. Let's see, I, I really think by the time they're in fourth or fifth grade, they're going to be doing phenomenal, because they'll have multiple years in the program. The teachers will have multiple years teaching the program, so I think it's just going to get better. And then one last slide with I Ready, it's kind of a growth quadrant. So if you look at the top, you always want to be in, so you have low performance and high growth, and we have high performance and high growth. Of course, we always want to be in the high performance and high growth, but I think it's always important, at least, to be in the high growth at all times. And so all of our grade levels are in the high growth, and we have first, second, and the third are all in the high performance and high growth. So I was really proud of how everyone did with that. So I thought it was, you know, a little point to brag about, and I wanted to share that with you guys.
A real quick question that may not fit here, but since we're flipping to the older grades, at what point do we ask the kids metacognitively how they felt about taking the test afterwards? I know that all schools do a lot of testing and things like that, but do we have any qualitative, like, statements from students starting in third grade, like, if I'm in the red, is it because I don't care if I'm in the red? You know, when do we ask them about that? I know there's test fatigue and things like that. I think Lindbergh does an excellent job with, you know, just picking the right assessments we need to do. But when do we ask the kids?
So I don't have any tool where we have actually asked the students, how did you feel about this particular assessment? So I'm, I'm listening to your question and taking it as feedback also at the same time. The one thing I can tell you is looking at patterns and trends of our students in the spring that are performing on grade level or above in the winter and in the fall, and dipping in the spring. Students who are on track and doing really well, just saying, I'm done. And we'll, we'll see that decrease. We'll see a rapid guessing percentage go up for particular students in the spring. And I don't want to, I, I think not using that as an excuse for things, but I think it does, it is a variable that plays into some of our spring results, where students have just taken the state math test, and then we ask them to take NWEA, like, innocence weeks after, and we start to see them like, I'm out a little bit. And that's not every particular student. It's a few students, but we do see that. And that in itself is not a survey qualitative approach of seeing how kids do, but we can look at that and say, they're tired. And they're, it's been a tough, you know, a tough, a long year. So I think we can get a little bit of information from them in that particular way as well.
Because I like what Craig said, even about learning this test, this new test, and procedures and stuff like that too. So I could also see some students, the second time they see it, you know, being like, oh, aha, this is the format of the test. This is what I feel about the test and things like that, which would be great. So almost, I wasn't really in my mind when I asked the question, although I appreciate your answer, about the spring slide. But more just, you know, maybe in the fall and spring, if they answered the same way, like, I didn't give it my best, you know, and, and working with the students on that piece, you know? Because you don't really need to sometimes with the EOCs and the ACT and the AP and things like that. Different, so there's that sweet spot of that, you know, third through seventh grade.
Which really speaks to the need to engage kids in setting goals for themselves and feeling that sense of like pride, and wow, look what I've done, look what I've learned, and I'm going to celebrate that. And I feel like I want to see what, what can I do on my own. But to Jill's point about, about spring, that in, Craig mentioned this earlier, that we have some inconsistencies that we see, that we can't quite figure out why does that pattern or lack of pattern exist. We see some cases where students actually significantly outperform the fall of the following year after, after, compared to what they did in the spring of the previous summer. So exactly opposite of what we were talking about with some of that FastBridge data, where there was a significant drop in the fall. Sometimes with NWEA, we're seeing a significant growth in the fall, when kids are kind of energized. I will say anecdotally, we often hear from students also that the reading passages in assessments are not the most engaging. And so, and that's because they're open-source document, you know, reading passages. So keeping kids excited about reading things that maybe they did not choose can, can have a level of impact.
Thank you. I also have a question before we move on to NWEA. Are the fourth and fifth graders do I Ready? It's part of the math program we use? Are those results not being shared because we're using the NWEA results? Okay. I think that was my...
So just to answer that is, I Ready, although it's used as part of a curriculum formative assessment in the classroom, it's not a district required assessment. So it's not in our district assessment plan, it's part of the curriculum, but we are using the K through 3 component as a district, as part of our district assessment program.
And are those results, the I Ready results, shared with parents on SIS?
They will be starting next year. After one year of administration, we'll start to share them.
Thank you.
One last thing that, interesting, not really a self-assessment, Dr. Lorenz, but one interesting thing that I Ready does is that when we look at the data, sometimes there's a little red flag there. And if we click on it, it'll tell us this student rushed through the test, because it kind of has how long it should take for a student to do it, and if someone completes it quicker. And usually those students are in the red and they get a red flag, because they just zip through it. So it's a nice little feature. Next slide, Kellen. So we have our NWEA data, so I'm going to talk about the fourth and fifth grade before we transition over to Dr. Zagor. So I'm almost finished. I just have a few more slides. Next slide, Kellen. So this one is broken, it's a little different, it's broken into quintiles. So we are looking, our students, our goal is to be in the top three quintiles. So in the average, high average are the high, and stay out of the low average and the low. So next slide, Kellen. When we get into our data, here's our fourth grade. We have reading on the left, and we have math on the right. So let's look at reading first. So we outperformed the national mean, but we were slightly about a point and a half off on our pace of growth. And then we, at the bottom, we were, we had 78% of our students in the top three quintiles in the fall, and we dropped that down to 76 in the spring. So that's one, it's like, okay, we've got to figure out, you know, we've got to deep dive into this NWEA data and find out, you know, what can we do, what can we do better? We didn't meet what we wanted to, so what can we do better? Now, the good news is when we look over at the math, we outperformed and outgrew the national average, and then we went from 74% of students in the top three quintiles to 78%. And as we move to our fifth grade, NWEA, we outperformed once again in the reading, slightly off the pace, about, not quite two points off the pace. And we did slip a little bit from 76 in the top three quintiles to 71% in the top three quintiles in our reading, but rebounded in math, where we outperformed and outgrew the national average, and we went from 67 to 69% in the top three quintiles. And then we have a cohort look at how our students did from, the students who took the NWA in fourth and fifth grade. When you look at our reading, you know, we had that dip, and we dipped from 76 in the top three quintiles to 71 in reading. And then in math, we stayed even-steven. It was 69 and 69. But one thing in the math, I wanted, a smiley face I drew on my notes was that, and the above average, or above the high average, the very high, our fourth graders, when they were in fourth grade in math, there were only 13% in that top quintile, and that went up to 21%. So it's a good thing that happened there. And then my next slide, I want to get into our highlights and opportunities. So some of the highlights, just to summarize what I've been talking about for the last 55 minutes, is I feel like we're keeping pace with the, the pre-pandemic norms, which we kind of compare ourselves in both FastBridge and I Ready. Our second grade A reading, our high risk was reduced to 9%. Second grade auto reading, our high risk was reduced to 7%. And our second grade CBM was high risk reduced to 6%. Next slide, Kellen. Third grade CBM, high risk reduced to 5%. Third grade auto reading is outperforming the national mean. I Ready K through 5, all grade levels had high growth. That's actually 1 through 5. We don't have the growth on K. And then I Ready K through 3 were high performance and high growth. And then our fourth and fifth grade NWA, we outperformed and outpaced the national means in both grade levels in math. And then now we'll move on to opportunities. Next slide. For reading, it's finding time for our professional learning communities to take that deep dive into data. It starts with, usually Jill and I talked to one of the principals today about, it starts with the admin in the building, kind of looking at all our pieces of data and doing that triangulation and trying to find those areas. And then that ends up going back to having the conversations with teachers and figure out, you know, what do you think happened that we didn't meet the goals we wanted to meet? What can we do differently? What should we try differently this year? And it's, it's different students, but, you know, we had the conversation today as we looked at, we had one of the principals in, it's like, okay, here's the DreamBox data says, our fourth grade wasn't doing good at measurement. And then NWA says, we didn't do good at measurement. And I Ready says, we didn't get good at measurement. Well, guess what? We need to have conversations and say, hey, we, we didn't meet the, the goals we set for measurement this year. You know, what, what do we think we can do differently? What can we do more so we can raise this up? And, and we were looking at, throwing in some math scores too. So we have multiple pieces of data, but when you see the same thing pop up over and over, it's like, okay, that's, that's something we have to address with our instruction. As I said early when I was talking, we have to look at the growth levels beyond just the risk levels, because you can dig deeper and get a, get a better story. And sometimes it's like, well, I know they're down to high risk, but we are showing some good growth. But we also have to look, yeah, they're up to the low risk, but we're not seeing the, the rate of growth we want. So we have to look at everybody and make sure we're getting the growth we need. That's kind of, sometimes we need further diagnostics when we don't see that growth, to try and really pinpoint what the deficiency might be. And then we turn around and we plan instruction to respond to the needs of the students. We got another reading slide there, Kellen. Continuing in reading to build foundational skills, it's developing those decoding skills that kiddo's need there in K and 1, and then working our way up into comprehension strategies, and all along the way trying to develop a robust vocabulary. One of the things that I think everyone will say that helps to become a better reader is if you develop your vocabulary. And then finally, with our reading opportunities, is just make sure kids have time to read. You know, we have to have time to, to practice our craft with them.
Can I ask a question before you go to math? Do we have enough reading specialists to help the kids who are high-risk?
I would like to have one reading specialist per grade level, per building. So, Joelle, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You know what? We have, we have great people. We use a systematic way to service our students, but if you ever ask me, could you use more help? I'm always going to say, absolutely. You know, we could, we could definitely have more people out there helping. So I'm trying to answer, answer without answering. So yeah, we'll always say help. Absolutely. But I do think the people at StaffBridge are doing a wonderful job with our kids.
And I think the way that we staff reading specialists too is important to note. So one of the things that Craig has done over the course of this last year is really look at reevaluating, so that it's not, you get this number of reading specialists in your building because you have this many students, but look at the needs of the students in that building. We've always had additional staff in our Title I buildings to support additional interventions, but that doesn't mean that that's always where the risk level lies. So being able to really target and ensure that no matter which elementary building you are in, if you are... you are in, if you are at high risk, that there are the resources and the people there in that building that we're spreading our, our resources throughout all the buildings.
Fifth grade seemed to struggle a little bit. And thank you all. I know you've worked very hard over the past two to three years to put new programs in. Is there a difference? Is it a longer test or a different task, you know, comparison from fourth to fifth grade? Or what, what do we maybe think might be going on there?
There's a couple of things. I think it'll take a little bit. I think those fourth and fifth grade numbers will improve over time as teachers and students get more used to this program and, and they're developing better number sense. And fifth grade is former fifth grade teacher. Fifth grade math is always really rigorous. So it, it's not easy. And there is a jump in the rigor of those tests, in my opinion. So it's not anything. It's, you know, it's a difficult test and we'll keep doing our best to prepare them. But I, I do think, well, you're going to see improvement. We'll matriculate up over the next few years as we have the program longer.
Okay. Thank you.
But I also think this is something to keep in mind with our fifth graders. So let's just go down their journey. And again, this is not an excuse, but this is also to Kathy's point and to Craig, as we learn our testing program and we become familiar, we get comfortable in a testing environment, all of those things. These third graders did not take us, they, these fifth graders were third graders when we sent them home after spring break in 2020. So they didn't take state assessment that year. Last year's testing environment was not our normal. Would we do it over two days instead of spread out? If they were in session, if they were doing ARC last year, some kids didn't even come in, didn't come in and take it. This is their first year to really have that testing experience in that platform. And again, that is not an excuse, but I will be curious to watch them grow as, as that happens. And so I also think that can contribute a little bit to our kindergartners and things like that. Because when you see first and second, but then when you see when we have them in second and third, and starting to see that starting to get caught up. So I, I, I think what I would say, and I know we're going to have Ronnie talk about is we now have the tools for our, our teachers throughout the year to have conversations about their academic growth. When you look at things like state assessments and things, that's what I would refer to as an autopsy. You do it one time, you get that score, and then you move on to the next year. There isn't that opportunity like we have now with these tools where you can sit down with Johnny or Suzie and say, hey, you weren't very good at number sense. What's your plan? What are we going to do before we take that next test? And I think that's what it's about because I think everyone in this room can say that they learned something and that light maybe took them a little bit longer for it to click than, and it maybe didn't happen over that year, but a year later it did. And again, I think it's important that this is about the journey of where we have a kid and how do we progress them through our system to make sure that they are growing and there is growth. Yes, we want that accelerated growth and we want them all on grade level as quick as we can. But we have tools now where we didn't have before that a kid, oh, I'm always below basic or I'm always basic. You know, there isn't that hope. Now we have a great, we have tools to generate this hope in our kids about learning that says, hey, look, you grew this much. You're not quite where you need to be yet. How are we going to get there? And that's what these tools are about. And so I think that's really important. And I don't want that to get lost in, in just looking at numbers and, and looking at all of those things. So these are some very powerful tools that our teachers will just get better and better at and using and helping our kids grow academically. So.
One last slide, Colin. Opportunities in math. It's kind of like the building the foundational skills in reading and the decoding. We have to build good number sense. And I, Chris, kind of like I just said, it will improve over time. And then the main thing I keep, I have to pull the reins sometimes on the teachers is we gotta take our time, respond to the needs of our kids and not just rush trying to finish a program or finish a book. It's like, what are our kids? Do we need a little more time? And we take a little bit more time. Because I'd rather build really good number sense and be off that pace a little bit. But in the long run, do the best thing we can for kids. Because if we go too fast down in K one and two, those are the students who have trouble when they're up in four and five. And then once again, as I said, reading, we'll use the data to respond to student needs and do the best to tailor our instruction to get the most success. So before I turn it over to Dr. Zagora, what questions?
I was just going to ask on both the reading and the math about after school opportunities. You know, we talked a lot about the teacher and during the class and interventions and things like that. But opportunities for growth for kids after school?
Outside of the school day, I don't know. We do some tutoring through community ed. I'm not sure exactly how many of those opportunities are. But even within the school day, outside your normal reading and math, the teachers have done a great job of trying to carve out other pieces of time, or they do some flexible grouping. They might even be trading some students from classroom to classroom to make some intervention groups that they need to do. So the teachers have been really good about being creative to try and get the most out of their day. There's a finite number of minutes in a day and they squeeze every millisecond out of them. But it's something that outside of the community ed, I don't know, Tara helped me out here. I'm not, not a lot of stuff spring into mind academically.
I think our biggest support is the summer additional learning time in summer. I mean, one of the challenges I think, and this is my personal opinion, is, you know, students' readiness to continue learning for a longer day. At what, you know, to what degree does that have impact? You know, going back to the conversation around fatigue, you know, you've already had a hard day doing hard stuff that stretches you and pushes you. Do you have the wherewithal to do more of that in a, in a single day? So how we can use the time that we have in summer school. And as you guys know, we've, in, you know, our summer school has expanded exponentially over the last few years as we've tried to support the learning growth that needs to continue to happen and then mitigate that summer slide for our students as well.
I just want to add one thing because I think that looking at interventions is great. And we have individual students and I know special school district is implementing some new reading intervention programs that we've been working on for the past few years and they are going to be in full effect. So we'll be monitoring that program effectiveness as well. But while we're looking at student individual interventions, which is something we definitely should, should be doing, we should also be looking at going back to that satellite view and how can we use this data to also address, what are the things that we're doing in the classroom tier one for all students that are definitely getting us to the place that we want to be. And so while we're looking at strong interventions, also teachers looking at their pacing, the resources, you know, monitoring our students getting it along the way. And then being responsive in the classroom too, is how we also want to look at the, the data for both purposes. So I think that will also be helpful. And as Dr. Lake said, as teachers get more familiar with using, using some of these tools, I just want to kind of go back and show some grace to the teachers who began implementing NWEA in the midst of a pandemic when we were not even in, in the classroom. They were helping to, or they were trying to learn to do this. I'm trying to capture them to teach it. And they were doing that. So as they become more familiar and how they can use the data to help support the classroom, I think that we will continue to see, see that growth as well.
Does this data include our English language learners and students with IEPs? Yes? And then do students, or not students, I'm sorry, do teachers and/or administrators have opportunities to evaluate the assessments themselves to make sure that they are equitable for students and that the students are able to kind of, I'm just thinking off of experience, like I had when I was teaching third grade, we had a state assessment and an entire reading and writing piece was on a visit to an arboretum. And I had probably 95% of my students were English language learners and didn't know what an arboretum was. So how can we expect them to perform well when that, you know, that base knowledge is not there? And so I was just wondering if there's any evaluation process of the actual assessments for us to kind of keep track on that.
Well, because it's a normed assessment, we're never going to have access to the actual questions or the passages that they provide. Because that would, I guess, break the integrity of the, the assessment. But we do have teachers who are always looking over the student's shoulders and looking at those particular passages. And we have given NWEA specifically some feedback on how are they, that some of the passages just seem to be the cannons, you know? And it's because of the open resource and, and what's free to use. But we have given them that. And they responded with, that is a priority for us, that we are looking at who's taking our tools. And also, it's not even about just the passages, but the accessibility of the assessments for students who struggle having text to speech and just multiple opportunities for kids, speech to text opportunities we give our kids so that everybody can access the assessment. So, but I don't have that evaluation tool like with data on how people have said, but we have given feedback to the vendors with some of those concerns.
We've talked a lot about the kids who need help, but what about the kids who are already really doing really well? So how do we balance the, these kids need more help without leaving the kids who are doing really great behind and, and having them continue to learn too?
Oh, sorry. I think it's part of what I was trying to say with those kids who are in the green, we have to look at their growth numbers also. Because just because they're in the green, doesn't mean, you know, we want them to grow. We want to see years' growth out of them as well. And kind of on our, we were talking about being flexible groups and recognize kids that might need a little help. That plays for the enrichment side of it as well. So usually when we're trading some groups for remediation, we're doing the same thing with enrichment. It's like, well, okay, well, I have some kids I need to challenge. And so you have a couple, let's, let's put them together and work smarter here. So teachers really collaborate a lot so we can meet the needs of everyone on both ends of the, our charts.
So Julia, back to that point. So when we started this conversation four years ago, you know, we talked about, you know, who got left behind and no child left behind was your high performers. Because everyone in here that was a building principal, a teacher during the height of no child left behind, we were drilling and killing in teaching to a test. And we were leaving, I mean, these kids right up here, that we knew they were going to be proficient no matter what. They could show up and get the score they needed. And that, this tool right here now holds us accountable for those high performing kids. It says, hey, this is where they are. To Craig's point, they're in the green, but are we growing them? And that's what we want. We want to be held accountable for every kid's growth, no matter where they are. And we have tools for that now. Our state assessment doesn't necessarily give us that information that we need to be held accountable. So.
I don't have it in the slideshow, but I'll share in a board packet. I think I had one due today, Tara, that maybe I'll get that to you guys next week. I knew you were going to have enough of me today, but you didn't want that to. But it does show that it's I Ready. And I was looking at one classroom from one of our elementaries. And at first glance, like, oh, there's quite a few kids in the red. But then when I looked at their growth, even those kids in red were making over 100% growth in that year. They were just, you know, far behind. So it's, you know, when you dig into it, it tells more the truth. But it also, it always gives us that percent of growth. So even those kids in the high green, we got to make sure that they're showing that full years' growth also. So we've got some tools that really help us track that.
With, with these assessments, do teachers, how timely is the feedback that teachers get after students take these tests?
So the I Ready is pretty immediate.
Okay.
Because they can click right in and look at their own results. And the teacher, now some of the reports that we prepare for you, we got to cobble it together from multiple buildings. But a teacher themselves within FastBridge and I Ready, I'll speak to those who they can get in pretty quickly and look at their own classroom results immediately.
So they're able to then immediately start setting goals for their students and giving parents feedback about this is what we need to work on. This is the action steps we're going to take.
Yeah. And sometimes it just takes us a little bit longer to, if we got to collect from all six buildings and put the grade levels together to prepare a report to show like this overall growth, that takes a little bit of time. But a teacher themselves can log right into FastBridge, log right into I Ready, click diagnostic results, there's your class.
And then teachers in a PLC can then also talk about what they're seeing on their own results in their own classroom and then can start collaborating on different ways. So if you have a teacher that is, their students are doing well in a certain area, you can then start collaborating on what is it that you're doing in your classroom? How can I bring it in my classroom?
Yeah, it's a great way to, exactly what you're describing, is we can compare strategies of, hey, what are you doing? I need to be able to do more of that. But also that being able to put some of those kids together. It's like, oh, I've got some kids here too that have the same deficiency. Let's, let's be smart about how we're going to approach this with our small groups or our interventions. So, and all that happens in our professional learning communities. All right, I'm going to shut my mic off and let Dr. Zagora take over.
And we're out of time. So thank you for being here. I don't want one of those red flags to pop up that I moved through it too quickly. But I also, I recognize that we're running short on time. So as I talk about middle and high school academic data, with the NWEA map growth for reading and math, that's what we have for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And so you'll see some similar trends that you saw with fourth and fifth grade. But to, to just make some statements across the board about what we see in middle school, because it is a similar story in all three grade levels, that we do see some cohort growth. And we, across the board, we see that Lindbergh performance, we outperform that national mean, fall, winter, and spring. And again, that national mean is from 2020 pre-pandemic. And so we are outperforming that national mean. But we also see some things that are really compelling us to ask a lot of questions. So I don't come to you necessarily with the answers for why we see what we see. This is only the second year that we have used this assessment. And so we are really at a point of, as Dr. Sparks said at the outset, we're using this as a baseline to generate the right questions to ask, to work with our teachers, to support our teachers. And so to Matt's point earlier about, you know, our PLCs using this data, we had obviously two unusual years and, and our instructional coaches really stepped up during that time. And at the middle school level, they have been pushing into these PLCs and working with the teachers to understand what do these NWEA reports show? And how do you use that both at the, or at the building level, the teacher level, and at the student level as well? And so we've learned a lot. We have a lot left to learn. So what you have here first is sixth grade. And again, above, you can see the R mean versus the national mean. And then you see those quintiles. And so what we see in sixth grade reading, and you'll see this in a few of the others as well, is that we see that our performance in winter is actually a little bit better than our performance in the spring. And I know we've talked about that already and what are the possible reasons for that? And I think, you know, these are complex questions. There's never a single answer. It's, oh, this is why that happened. But it is important to consider that as, you know, our students get older, our middle and high school students, we are sometimes battling against things like testing fatigue or student apathy. And so those are the questions we need to ask about why we're seeing what we're seeing. Our middle school students take two state assessments in the spring. Our, our eighth grade students take three state assessments in the spring. And this, these NWEA assessments were given after those, this most recent school year. And so it's, you know, a contributing factor perhaps, but certainly not an excuse, a question to ask to keep looking into. If you go ahead to the next slide, we'll look at the cohort change that we've seen. And so we do see a slight uptick from fifth grade to sixth grade. So this is that same group of students, for the most part, same group of students, their spring assessment in fifth grade versus sixth grade. And we do see that we went from 65% in that average, high average and high to 66% with our sixth graders, which is good. You know, it may not, it may seem like marginal growth, but we know that those transition points of sixth and ninth grade are often where sometimes we see our students take a bit of a dip in that transition to a new experience. But we did see cohort growth and that's encouraging. Next slide. This is our, sorry, back one. There you go. This is our math cohort. And so we saw a little bit of a dip here, 66% with our fifth graders in those top three quintiles to 63% of our sixth graders. So something we're, we're looking into with, with those math skills. And our PLCs are, are taking a look at that as well. We did have new math resources this year. And so we've had a lot of new things over a couple of years. So anytime we're introducing something new, we, we always expect that there might be just that period of getting used to it and getting our students used to it as well.
Do the, do the students who are in sixth grade taking seventh grade math take the same test as the sixth graders or the seventh graders?
So something that's really amazing about NWEA is that it is adaptive. So it's, it doesn't, it's just a student starts the test. Like they start with question one. And depending on if they get the question right, it will increase in complexity. And if they get the question wrong, it will decrease in complexity. So why these adaptive assessments are so much, this is kind of pretentious, but so much more superior to like state level assessments is because there's no ceiling or floor. So like when you're talking about a state level assessment, the students test within the grade level and that's where they are. We don't know how far above, we don't know what advanced means. We don't know what basic means. When we take a state level assessment, when we take an adaptive assessment like NWEA or A Reading in FastBridge or I Ready with mathematics, the students are all taking a test and growing. And so it really just depends on where they are. And then we can see what grade level they're kind of performing in comparison appears. So it's not a sixth grade test, a seventh grade test, or an eighth grade test. It's actually, when they get to sixth grade, the test is called six plus. So, and the scores will range all the way up to 12th grade.
Excellent. So here we have our seventh grade scores on NWEA and reading and math. Again, outperforming that national mean set before the pandemic. But what you see here, a little bit more pronounced in the seventh grade reading is that, you know, we want those bottom two quintiles, that yellow and red to that yellow and red to shrink as the year goes on. And we do see it shrink down in the winter. And then we see it grow a little bit more in the spring on both of those. And again, this, you know, back to the beginning of this evening's presentation, it does not necessarily mean that individual students didn't show growth. They may have shown growth, even significant growth, but it may not have been enough to move them out of one quintile into another. So when we talk, get to the opportunities section, I'll talk a little bit about what we can do with individual students there. Next slide. This is our seventh grade reading cohort. Excuse me, there's a fly circling my face. So here we, we saw some strong growth. We saw our sixth grade students, 68% of them were in those top three quintiles. Our seventh grade students, we, we jumped up to 71%. We had 35 students that grew enough to move a whole quintile. And so we do, we are seeing increases with these groups of students. We know there's individual growth and we're seeing those, that whole grade level cohort growth from, from year to year. Next slide. And in math, we also see some good cohort growth, 66% of our sixth graders in those top three quintiles. And that jumps to 68% of our seventh graders that were in those top three and slight reduction there in those low categories. That's fine. You can go on, move on. We're running short on time. All right. And then here in eighth grade, we, you know, this is not the trend we want, obviously on the bottom, but still again, outperforming that national mean. But we do see that the, those yellow and red quintiles grow a little bit with our, with our eighth graders. But when I show you ninth grade here in a second, we, we are hopeful that those, those gains are made and we make up for that as our students progress. Similar to elementary, as they get used to these assessments, as our teachers get used to using this data that we will see, that growth that we want to see. Next slide. So this is our cohort change for eighth grade. And we do see a slight reduction here from 71% of our seventh graders last year being in those top three quintiles to 68%. And then, you know, I think what, what we see here, and we can jump to the math as well, is that we, we see in eighth grade that, that we're not seeing the growth that we want. But what I'll show you here in a second is that we're making up for those, for those, those dips when our, when our students get to high school. So and our eighth graders as well, keeping in mind that they, their whole middle school experience was not what middle school ought to have been. Three grade levels interrupted. And so they, you know, as our teachers adapted that and our students adapted to that, we're, we're really looking forward to getting back to, we all want to get back to what it was or whatever the new is. All right. Next slide, please. So our NWA ninth grade students, this was actually their first year using this assessment. And we do have high mean performance. Our, our averages are good with our ninth grade students. We do see a similar fall to spring trend as we did with our eighth graders. And so again, being brand new this year, our teachers renewed it and our, our students while they had taken it as eighth graders. This is a new test for our ninth graders. So if you jump to the next slide, you'll see that we did have strong cohort growth with this group. So we had 68% in those top three as eighth graders. And then by ninth grade, we had 71%. And we had some reductions in our, our low quintile there. If you look at our lowest, from 17% of them being in that low quintile in eighth grade to only 9% in ninth grade. So a good jump that we see there. And now I'm jumping into some other high school academic measures since our NWEA does not go beyond ninth grade. This is where we get to look at other assessments, like our advanced placement assessments, our ACT. And these, you know, tell an interesting story as well, that I think show that we are continuing to really strongly prepare our students for their post-secondary experience. So this is our five-year trends of our AP test scores. So that's a one to five scale and, and a score of a three or higher is considered a passing score. And we saw obviously a dip there during the pandemic years, but we've started to rebound and, and had some great passing scores, 77% this year. Next slide. And you'll see a big change that we have seen is we have seen a decrease in the number of exams taken. And there's, there's a dual credit part to this story that I will share because this does not mean that our students aren't taking those courses. We have a lot of students taking those courses, but we have fewer students taking the test. And that's because a lot of our students are choosing the dual credit option, which is kind of that guaranteed college credit option instead of taking that AP test. But we do still have, and I think, I think this is something to be proud of, that we have more than 400 students a year that take an AP test. And the number of students who take an AP course would be even higher than that. So we had 733 exams taken this year. 76.7% of our students who took an AP exam got a three or higher on at least one of those exams.
Ronnie, what's the national average? And I know we looked that up for the AP. It's like 38, 39, 40?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I know that we're well above it.
I think it's important for people to understand that is very impressive. I mean, those AP success rates is, it's very impressive compared to the national average of kids that take an AP exam. And it's, it's, you know, that's something to be noted. So.
Next slide. So not only do we do well on the test, but we do very well on some of the tests. We give the 29 subject tests in our AP program. And this year, we had 12 of those subject tests that had 90% of our students or higher, scoring a three or higher. So an over 90% pass rate. Actually, five of our tests that had a 100% pass rate. And some of those are even some of our newer courses. So we, we don't have years of data and years of experience to, to help us prepare for those exams. So I think these are some really impressive stats here. Next slide. But as I said, there's more to the story of why our number of test takers has declined. And we do have a huge and growing dual credit program. And I have spoken to you all very recently about what that looks like here in Lindbergh. And so just some data for you to see for this most recent academic year, where our students were taking those courses, those partnerships that we have. It tells you how many courses we offer from those different institutions, how many seats, or in other words, how many, how many students total across the board registered for those courses. The last two, so Missouri University of Sciences and Technology, that is retroactive course credits. So students who do the project lead the way program, they can apply for that course credit after they've taken it. So we don't have the most recent data for that. And then this was our first year using an UMSL dual credit course. So we don't have that data as well. But we're talking about hundreds, thousands of hours of college credit that our students have earned. And I did some quick math today. Between St. Louis Community College and Missouri State, it's, it is more than $800,000 of college tuition that students have saved. And if I had that data from St. Louis University, that would probably push us over a million dollars of tuition saved. So these courses, it's important to note, these are college level courses. In many cases, these are the AP courses. It is both an AP course and a dual credit course. And so this is a very rigorous, challenging experience for our students. This is not just they're taking a high school class and they get to pay a tuition fee and collect some credit. These are high level classes and they're really preparing our kids for, for college after. Next slide. And then I have some ACT data to, to wrap up here. So we do not yet have our ACT composite average for the class of 2022 because some of those graduating seniors are still taking tests and over the summer. And so we won't get that until the fall. But what we do have is we have our ACT averages for all of our students who took an ACT in this most recent school year and the prior school year. So those might be 10th, 11th, 12th grade students. That's just all the students in a given school year. And then we also have our class of 2021 ACT average scores. And so what I've put down there at the bottom of the slide is what the college board, what ACT would tell us are college readiness benchmarks. And those are based on their research. Students who perform at that level are higher, have a higher likelihood of completing college, of getting passing grades in college and, and getting their degree in a timely manner. And so as you can see, we are outperforming those benchmark scores in some cases significantly. For example, if you look at that English benchmark of 18, and you look at our English scores, which are in the 23 to 24 range. So we are, are well beyond those benchmark scores, which I think is great evidence for us to hang our hats on that we are getting our kids college ready. We are sending them to college where they are going to perform well and maybe even show up as sophomores with all that dual credit that collected.
So I said this to Tara, I would be curious in the future, what percent of our class meets the college benchmark on all four of those as well? And I, I just know from being a former high school principal in two high schools in Kansas City, that we have a 24.4 average on the science. That's the hardest because it's a reasoning test. And that's why it's also the highest for the benchmark. The fact that our kids are above that is excellent. And then there's this thing called Google on the AP. You can find out, Kathy sent me a text, it's 60% of AP kids got a three. So almost 20% higher than the national average on that. So that's, I knew it was significant. I didn't know what it was. So.
Well, as long as we're adding that, for the ACT, the national composite is a 20.3. And were it?
Almost 25. Yeah, almost 25.
Composite.
Or, yeah, no, 24. Sorry. I was looking at the reading. Yep.
I would be interested in one more thing, just as a side note, and this is again later, one sentence next year. ASVAB on here too, GED. Just because if we're looking at all secondary kind of nationally, I don't know if nationally normed is the right term, but tests that kids take across the nation, I'd be interested in ASVAB and the GED. Thanks.
Next slide. So just our, you've seen this before and we of course highlighted at our graduation, but our class of 2022 profile. And so we do, we, we see our students, they, they, we prepare them well. They move on to those universities. And while it's very difficult to collect postgraduate data, especially beyond that first 180 days after they graduate from with us, we are setting that as a goal to look at what other measures we can take to collect that data. But, you know, anecdotally, we hear year after year after year from our graduates that, boy, I got to college and I was so much better prepared than all of my classmates. We especially hear it about our, their college comp classes. I got to college and no one else knows how to write. So next slide. And our highlights and opportunities here. So as I mentioned, just to summarize, we did see some strong cohort growth despite the, the strange conditions in which we've been learning. We're definitely seeing a rebound from the.
Could you try again?
Excuse me. We're seeing a rebound on our AP scores after the pandemic dip, which is great. Really strong ACT scores that continue to indicate college readiness. And then that dual credit growth just really tells its own story. We know that that equals college preparedness. And in addition, it's just such a, a great financial gain for our families. So one of our biggest opportunities here is to work with, and this is, you know, especially important with our, our secondary students, helping our students set those individual goals. When, especially with the NWEA and those math and reading tests that they're taking a few times a year, is supporting our teachers to enable their students to do that goal setting and measure their own growth and have buy-in to what that assessment is telling them about what they've learned and, and giving them that confidence and celebration that they can have when they see that growth. And asking those questions about, you know, I, I think Kathy brought up a good point of, are we asking our students, how'd you feel about that test? And collecting some of that data so that we can make sure we're setting up the right conditions for our students to, to do the best that they can. And we do want to take a look at the, that, the impact of our dual credit on AP. We know we're doing good things for kids. We know that whether they take an AP test or they choose the dual credit option, that, that we are doing well and we're giving them those opportunities. But I say that we would like for our students to take that AP test. We think it does, not just as a helpful data point for us, but to keep those, their opportunities open as well. Our dual credit courses are set up so that most of them are those Core 42 classes that transfer within the state of Missouri. But we also want our students to have those options where I can go anywhere. I can transfer anywhere down the road and I have that transferable score of an AP test. And we know that we do a great job preparing them for that. And we think that they would do well. So we're, we'll be having some conversations and asking some questions around that as well. Any questions?
It's, it's easier to measure things for students who are planning on going to college, but that for the kids, the 15.6 who plan employment, is there any way to break that down further and try to understand what they're doing to try to measure or see? Maybe it can't be measured, but at least just see that what they're doing is, is helpful and that they're being successful.
So part of the, my personal goal on that postgraduate data is to get it exactly that. Because I think when we have those measures that say you're college ready and you're going to college, then I think we can have the confidence that we have done a good job in preparing them for that. But we don't get that same kind of data with our, our straight to workforce students. Now, they do take the same assessments as, as our other students that we have, that are, are universal assessments for all students. But things like the ASVAB, for example, we also have a lot of students that will take the AccuPlace or if they're going the community college route. So there are other measures I think that we could collect. We have, some of our students that attend South Tech take like the ACT work keys, for example. So that's an assessment for students that would be planning to potentially go straight into the workforce. So I, I think there's more data and more opportunities there to, to really try to get a measure of how well those students are doing. Thank you.
And maybe with that follow-up, just send the board if we can see what we're asking the kids, because I don't know if everybody has seen that and, and seen what it looks like. If they don't have a student that's reached that age yet or something when it comes to that. I, I keep going back because I'm impressed about the ACT. So when you look at the 48 Missouri Bright Fight and they increased the Bright Fight scores. So, you know, years ago it was a 30, then a 31. Now, of course, they're going to make it a 32 for the class of 2023. You know, so seeing the 48 on there is really impressive too.
There we go. Now I have a microphone. I, I think this, this slide about the students and where they're going also, you know, illuminates something else. I don't think we've ever seen a gap year at a 5.2% the way that we're seeing this now. So it really just talks about kind of globally, some trends that we're, we're seeing. As we go on to the final slide, however, Colin, I just want to point out that when we're talking about student data, it's really a part of the student experience. That, that's our goal is that we are giving students a well-rounded experience that helps them be prepared for whatever it is that is in their future, workforce, college readiness, military, gap year, that they are ready to go. So what we've shared tonight in terms of the data, that's a piece of that. But we also need to be thinking about programming opportunities, ways that we're making learning authentic and realistic and applicable to life beyond the school experience. So I know you guys are super excited about our book study. So you can see you all have a, a copy of What School Could Be? And we've got our first workshop to discuss it in October, where we'll, we'll discuss through page 102 and then we'll wrap it up in January. But it's really a good marriage between those foundational skills that we know are essential for our students to be successful. And then the way that we build programs and support and educational experiences that help them apply those skills in a way that you can't measure on all of the data that we've seen here today. Those, those, those skill sets that are really about the application and the, the authenticity that you have to take and apply in life.
And the board members that were on, that we have the two new ones, we were going to discuss this and then the pandemic hit. So we read this a little while ago. So any of our current board members have misplaced their book or needs a copy of the book? Let us know and we will, oh, you got it? Okay. That's good. So and again, it's a, it's a, it's a good look at making sure that those fundamental skills are there, but it's a different approach to doing that. For instance, can you teach geometry? Does it have to be in a geometry class or can it be in a construction class? And you still get the same standards and the same testing and making it more authentic and real? Because I think we all real, realize that when we were engaged or had an interest or a passion in our learning, we probably all excelled in that. We all had classes in our lives that we're like, I got to do this. I got to check it off. So how can we make this learning, making sure they have those fundamental skills, those foundations, but really find their passions and drive them into that excitement and, and why we have them here? And then let them explore different opportunities and things. So it's a great book. So I'm excited to see and have some conversations around it.
Thank you, Dr. Sparks, Dr. Hamby, Dr. Lawson, and Dr. Segura. We're going to move on to our district safety update. And I believe we're going to start with Terrell Baker.
I'll try to. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak tonight in regards to safety and security updates and information. Slide. Just my background so you can see that. I think that's important to tell transparency of where I've been and my certifications. Next slide. Throughout this presentation, you will see dates with parentheses and stars by them with MSEP 6. So that's the Missouri School Improvement Program. These are, these are the Missouri standards as far as safety, section L10. This is, this is important that we stay beyond reproach when it comes to safety and security. So we want to make sure that we're keeping up with the state standards. And that's one of the, one, one of the biggest things that, that I stress upon. And I try to make sure that we're in compliance with state certifications. So that first one you'll see up there, CES, Missouri School Safety Specialists. So this is a, this is a state requirement that all security directors, security coordinators, SROs, 2020, we're all certified and qualified by the state of Missouri. So we don't want to just stop right there. we don't want to just stop right there. Uh, so this is a state's, uh, certification, so we want to, we have a security staff as well, which is, most of our security staff is retired St. Louis County, St. Louis City, uh, and former, uh, fire marshals. Uh, so we want to in turn make sure that tho, those, uh, uh, those guards have, uh, this certification as well. So this summer, uh, this August, we'll have our whole security staff, uh, certified in, uh, Missouri School Safety Specialists. Um, next, uh, no, go back, Colin. Next bullet point here, Regional Safety Liaison, Regency. So I am, uh, part of the MSBA Missouri Regional Safety Liaison for, uh, Safety Directors. So that's, why is that important? So we're getting, uh, direct information from the Missouri School Board on how to keep our schools safe. So, um, that's very important, because what I do is take that information back, and then I actually chair, um, uh, an actual, uh, area safety and security coordinators for, uh, St. Louis, uh, County Schools. So we're, uh, uh, that's valuable, too, because we're sharing information and intel, and then I'm also bringing it back from the state level, but then also, uh, able to inflect, uh, information around for our, uh, area schools as well as we share information, uh, that's vital to safety and security. Next slide, Colin. It's all about empowering yourselves with, with knowledge. Um, um, I retired from the Navy in two thousand thirteen, um, and in the Navy, uh, I don't know if you all know it or not, everyone is designated as a firefighter. So how that relates to this scenario, each and every one of us, the community, the staff, um, every, every surrounding law enforcement, we're all part of school safety. It, everybody is a safety professional. It doesn't just have to be Terrell Baker saying that, hey, we need to do these things and do these things, but it's everybody's responsibility. And what I want to do is empower people with knowledge. I'm a big, um, uh, supporter and, and, um, motivator when it comes to safety training. So you'll see those in the next slide of things that I'm, uh, doing for the district. Next slide. Go ahead. All right, so, two thousand nineteen, I came on board and I was hired. Um, this is an MSEP-SIX, uh, requirement. In two thousand nineteen, Lindbergh Schools had already surpassed that and, uh, and was, is in compliance with, uh, the state mandate. Uh, so I was hired on in two thousand nineteen. Um, Dr. Lake came to me and said that, you know, um, we want to implement cross, a crossing guard program, so I want crossing guards at each one of our schools. Um, it's, so, we, as we look at safe, uh, walking zones and, uh, kids coming to school with bikes and making sure that, uh, they're crossing safely, um, we, we completed that and we've obtained that now. Uh, each and every one of our schools has a, a crossing guard, uh, and I'm always recruiting, um, but, uh, this is a standard that we placed out and then we, we continue to do that, to have a safe, to have a safe walking zones. Um, establish a visitor management system. So, um, this is, uh, a standard that we had way back before I came in, in two thousand eighteen. Um, so this actual, um, program allows us to, uh, check visitors, uh, against the National Registry. So the, the system that we use is called Badge Pass. Some schools will use Raptor, um, they're all pretty much the same, but, uh, this is a tool that we use here. Uh, we've had it since two thousand eighteen and been in compliance with, uh, MSEP-SIX requirements. Uh, not only does this check against the National Registry, uh, each visitor is required to show, um, their driver's license as they come into the buildings, come through our, uh, security vestibles, and show that to the front office staff. Um, from that, it's an access management piece. We're actually able to pinpoint and actually see who's in our, and account for people that are in our building, visitors that are in our buildings. Uh, it'll print off a name tag, those, uh, individuals are, uh, escorted to their destination or their appointments, whether it's a contractor or someone just coming up, uh, for a visit with a counselor or parent or, this is a, this is how we're able to track people in our building, visitors in our buildings. Uh, so we've had this standard since two thousand eighteen. Next slide. Single-point entry, uh, security vestibles. You know that all of our schools, um, have, uh, have a security vestible, and we're actually, you know, we're doing construction on the high school, but, uh, we want to take it a step further. Uh, we want to be in compliance with national standards. So not just having, uh, a security vestible, but, uh, looking at having, uh, transaction windows, so that way, uh, we don't have to have visitors come into our front office, uh, but we're able to keep our staff safe and still do business. Um, so all of our schools have that, a single-point entry. Uh, we're in compliance with, uh, national standards. We look at, um, uh, having access to our schools, uh, with our local law enforcement. All of them have access to our schools, so that's never a question. Um, so that's, that's, that's a big, uh, step in safety and security, and most school districts are just now complying with that. Uh, but we're actually doing it the right way with all these different measures, and then, uh, if there's any type of failures, we're able to get, uh, law enforcement or force responders still, uh, able to accomplish them getting into our schools. Uh, Emergency Response Plan. So, uh, before I came on board, we had, we were in compliance, and we had an emergency, uh, uh, ELP plan. Um, so the only thing that I, I actually did was a great plan, I just revised it and put it into FEMA Response, uh, format, because if there's, if there's a crisis incident, we respond in FEMA, we use NIMS, uh, we use those particular, uh, uh, procedures in response. Um, so I just put it into the compliance with FEMA standards. Um, but what I want to, anyone can, can create an emergency management plan, but how do I get that information from, you know, being in compliance with, with the Missouri standards, but how do I get that? I don't expect the teacher to know all the acronyms and ins and outs of an emergency operation plan. So how do I get that information for them to understand it easily? So we went a step further, we created flip charts for all of our, uh, classroom, for our teachers. In that flip chart, uh, is a pre-planned response programs, that pre-planned response, uh, procedures, which basically breaks down, um, what their roles and responsibilities are in a crisis situation. I have about twenty-one different, uh, scenarios where principals, teachers, custodians, um, counselors, what they would happily do in specific type of emergency, uh, uh, incidents that we have. Um, PALS program, we partnered with St. Louis County, uh, PD, uh, to create the Police Athletically. So, uh, the Police Athletically is, um, and a, a way for officers to engage and, um, bridge that gap between law enforcement and students. Uh, it's also, uh, our officers, uh, come into the school district, uh, they're not in uniform, they're in athletic gear, and they're, they're using sports to connect with our students. Um, I love sports, I'm always at, uh, most of our sporting events, uh, I'm a coach, so I, I absolutely love the PALS programs. So we're able to have an officer in our elementary, um, middle school and high school settings. Um, just this past year, we've accomplished that. Um, and it's, and it's another way, another way for, uh, students to see law enforcement, just not just in uniform, and another way to connect with them using sports. Next slide. So district, district-wide radio upgrade, um, this is, uh, essential in a crisis and emergency situation. Not all schools have this. I visit, uh, tons of schools throughout St. Louis County, uh, and, and it's not a standard. It's a standard in Lindbergh School Districts. So I'm able to have my radio, my security radio, and I'm able to connect and talk to, um, other schools in an emergency or crisis situation, and all of our schools are able to talk amongst each other. That is, that is, uh, something that's not to be taken lightly. It's, it's, it's a standard that we have here, but not all schools have that. Um, so I'm, I'm very proud of, of that, and it's another way of communicating in an emergency situation.
Who at the school has that, has access to that radio system?
Say again.
Who at the schools has access to that radio system?
So your front, so all of the security staff, your SROs, but then inside of the school setting, your principals, your counselors, your front office staff. So, um, those are the people that would have, uh, that, uh, custodians that would have access to talk back and forth between, uh, the school leadership and, and security. So that's, that's a standard, and that's, that's something that we absolutely need in a crisis situation. Going a step further, uh, emergency paging system. This is, uh, a way we, we look at, um, all of our staff, uh, being able to communicate. Um, we have this system in place. Not all, uh, school districts have telephones in their classrooms. We have telephones in our classrooms. Teachers can actually, um, use the, use that paging system to alert staff or talk amongst staff. Um, I'm able to sit, uh, at central office, uh, and, uh, execute whether we have to do a lockdown or lockout situation. I'm able to talk to each and every one of those schools, uh, and make a, um, a loud, um, one, a loud, uh, response to them and get information to them. Like I'm able to sit from St. Ross and talk to each and every one of our schools. Um, that's a standard not all schools have, and we have that in Lindbergh. Um, the Regional Justice Information System, GPS nine-one-one, Analytics Alert Notification, uh, System. So this was a pilot, uh, that we had, uh, back in two thousand nineteen, uh, that Lindbergh, Melville, Jennings, um, and Brentwood, uh, have, uh, this system. So I'm able to get, uh, real-time alerts from, uh, St. Louis County Sunset Hills and Crestwood Dispatch Center. Why is that important? Um, if we have, um, a threat, uh, outside of the school, I'm able to get that alert. I can in turn, uh, communicate with our schools if we have to put them on lockout or lockdown. That's immediate, uh, real-time information from our nine-one-one, uh, system. Not all schools have this. Uh, at some point, it will be a standard for all, uh, schools, but this is something that we've had for the last, uh, two years. And when we look at those alerts, uh, the alerts will go to, uh, your principals, uh, your SROs, your security staff, and, uh, your leadership, uh, your district leadership. So we're in able to, to see that real-time information and then, uh, put in the proper, um, uh, response procedures. Next slide. So physical security assessment, uh, this is an MSEP-SIX, uh, requirement, uh, that we are in compliance with. Uh, this is one of the biggest things that I'm working on this summer. Uh, each and every one of our schools annually, uh, is supposed to have a physical security assessment. So when we look at doing these, uh, physical security assessments, I use the REMS TA, which is a Ready Information Management, uh, system that I, uh, I'm able to do these, uh, assessments on. So annually, every summer, I'll go through, and it's, and it's actually using, uh, subject matter experts, whether it's your IT, your facilities director, it's all of us coming together, looking at, uh, what threats or what, um, what things we need to mitigate inside of our schools, um, and then sharing that information back out with, with leadership. So I'm actively working on that, uh, right now for all of our schools. Uh, and before school starts, I will have an assessment for all of our schools. So that is an MSEP-SIX standard, and that's something that we are complying with, and I'll have completed in here shortly. Um, one of the biggest things, uh, I, when I came on board and I talked to Tara, what I wanted to accomplish was training, training for our staff. Um, you know, uh, COVID slowed me down a little bit, um, but now I can successfully say that we've created a long-range training, um, plan where we're going to actually, uh, conduct and act, or create an actual academy, uh, where we look at hands-on, uh, training for our staff. So that's real-time, in-person, in their schools, having their train. We're not going to, uh, 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 a site, off, off-site, we're doing training inside their schools, um, which is important, uh, so that they know how to respond in the school, in their school setting. Um, but we, uh, we recruited, um, some, uh, champions of safety. So we have, on this team, on this training team, we have our local law enforcement, we have our teachers, SROs, uh, they're all part of this training team, so we can in turn keep training our staff. So that's one of the biggest things that I want to accomplish here, and we're accomplishing that in an MSEP-SIX standard. Um, when we look at preparedness of our drills, uh, I'm always in, uh, communication with our principals, principals before school starts, so we will have our drill schedule for each school. So when we look at one fire drill per month, two tornado drills per year, uh, earthquake drills, and then four intruder drills, we're in compliance with that. Uh, even in COVID, we're in compliance with that, because when you look at doing it, we looked at doing tabletops, we looked at doing walkthroughs. Uh, so we were still in compliance, even though we weren't, you know, like, maybe face-to-face, but we were still, uh, in compliance with those state standards. And that's the success of like, the, the, the leadership and training team and, uh, the, um, law enforcement here to just continue doing that, and we still accomplished that through, uh, COVID. And so now, uh, we're back in, in full gear, and we can, uh, get our local law enforcement out to, uh, observe our, uh, intruder drills, we can get our fire marshals to observe our fire drills, um, and, uh, we're in compliance with that. Next slide. So, uh, one of the biggest things, uh, we use the Standard Response Protocol. So each and every one of our, um, when you look in our schools, we'll, uh, when you look in our, our hallways and our classrooms, they'll have this, uh, Standard Response Poster Protocol. Uh, and one of the biggest things is just educating and having people understand that, you know, what is a shelter-in-place event? What does that look like? What is a lockout? What is evacuate and a lockdown? What are the differences? Those are the terms that we use. Um, so, um, as part of that academy, we make sure that if we have any new teachers coming in, uh, and we make sure that we're in compliance that this information is sent out to everyone. Um, and this is, this, uh, information is in all of our classrooms and then, uh, in our hallways as well. So we know that shelter-in-place is, uh, always like a weather event, lockout is, there's an event that's happening outside of the school, so we'll have the, the kiddos come inside, uh, we'll conduct business as usual inside of the schools, but, uh, no one enters or comes out of the school until we deem, or to law enforcement deem necessary that, uh, we are in a, a safe, safe, safe haven now. Uh, evacuation, um, so we look at evacuating to rally points, uh, we, we practice on that on most of all of our, um, our drill sets, and then lockdown is when we have a threat inside where we, uh, completely lock the school down. Next slide. So active, uh, active drill, uh, response procedures. Um, one of the biggest things, um, go to the next slide, Colin. One of the biggest things that, um, I want to, uh, express is when we talk about rally points, and I haven't understood that rally points are just, is just a temporary, uh, place when you evacuate out of the school. It's a way for, once we're in that safe haven, we contact nine-one-one, and then we account for our kids. Reunification is, uh, places that we've partnered with, um, uh, and we've have several in our area that we, mass gathering areas that it's a sheltered location, uh, that we have MOUs with, uh, that in a crisis situation, they would stop shop and help us to do, to reunify, uh, kids with their parents. Um, and, uh, when we look at reunification, uh, once law enforcement is on scene and setting the perimeter, and if we actually have to go into reunification, they will, um, determine which location we will use for reunification. So one of the biggest things is just being in this position is our local partners, is our local partnerships with, uh, our local law enforcement, uh, states and, uh, federal. So a lot of them are represented here today, uh, just in case you may want to ask them questions after, uh, this presentation. Um, I just felt it necessary that you see, uh, you know, we have resources and help within the district when it comes to safety and security. So anything that I need as far as local, state, and federal, I'm always getting help from them. Next slide. So our SROs are, are partnered with, uh, St. Louis County, and in our jurisdiction, we use Crestwood and Sunset Hills. Uh, our security officers, again, are retired law enforcement, uh, former, um, fire marshals. And, um, And, um, one of the biggest, uh, one of the biggest things, um, just recently, uh, with these incidents that have happened, uh, I want to point out our local response time. Uh, when we look in our jurisdiction, our local response time is two minutes and 39 seconds. Uh, that's getting, uh, the information out and getting to law enforcement and them actually responding to our schools to help us. Uh, the national average is 18 minutes. Uh, and that, that seem, may seem a little bit long, but we're putting into context with, uh, rural areas. So it's always a time, a time, uh, thing. So that is the national average. So we're way, uh, we're way in front of that. Um, and then also each one of our local law enforcement have access to our schools. That's one of the biggest things that, uh, came out of Uvalde. Um, access to schools. Um, all of our, all of our law enforcement have, uh, maps to our schools. They actively, uh, come in and out of our schools. Uh, I share our EOP, uh, and, uh, EOP, uh, and flip charts and all of our safety stuff prior to school starting. So they have that information. Um, so there's no questions when they have to respond. Um, and all of them train and do walkthroughs, uh, Lindbergh's. Part of them, uh, most of them are part of our training staff as well. Next slide. Uh, one of the things I already discussed is just being a regional C, uh, Safety Liaison and that's just bringing information. I believe in sharing information and I've already talked about sharing, uh, uh, you know, chairing, uh, actual, uh, security coordinators meeting every month with local schools. Uh, one of the biggest things that just, uh, that I was just, uh, I talked with me and Beth, we talked with the joint FBI Joint Terrorism Task Force. Uh, their academic outreach program. This is, this is another resource for us to use in the case of a threat. Um, this is another resource that would actively investigate threats for us and it's another tool that we can use to get information back to our schools, uh, so we can investigate these threats. Um, and that, that outreach program, I, um, uh, they actually reached out to me and then they actually want to create an actual working group of, um, school, uh, SROs, security directors. They, we all want to create, so that way we have, uh, that direct intel from the FBI. So I think that's huge, uh, when it comes to intel for schools. Next slide. Courageous Report. Um, this is a, this is a state mandate and we've been in compliance with Courageous Report for, uh, the last three years. Uh, it is an anonymous reporting tool that you can use to report bullying threats, any threats to the school. Um, this is, uh, law enforcement-heavy. Uh, so this, uh, you're able to, to, uh, file reports, uh, that would get investigated by, um, uh, law enforcement 24/7. Uh, that information goes to law enforcement and then is shared with our, uh, our district leadership and principals. So that way in turn, we can see what the threat is. We can get, uh, information, uh, and intel back to us to see how we would, uh, proceed forward while we're receiving a threat. So this is a tool that I pass out at, um, at our board meetings just to get, when we look at information on this, uh, it's, it's information for parents, students and staff. Uh, it's a way, it's another resource that we can use to report threats. Uh, and this is a standard and we've been in compliance with this. Next slide. So one of the biggest thi, one of the biggest things that, um, uh, I, 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 I went to, uh, when I got hired on, I went to a Safety and Security Conference. Um, and I was able to meet, uh, with, um, with, with some, uh, representatives from CrisisGo. CrisisGo is a, is a, uh, cloud-based two-way, uh, alert reporting system. Uh, this is, um, a reporting system that all of our teachers, all of our staff, all of our district can use, uh, on their, uh, mobile devices, uh, devices. Uh, and we're able to communicate directly, uh, with law enforcement. Um, two-way communication. Sometimes you don't always have two-way communications in a crisis situation. Though, so that's, that's huge. We're able to do, uh, reunification, uh, with, uh, with that, um, with that program as well. So we're now piloting in Truman and Sabington. Uh, and I think this is, this is a smart way the district is going about it. We're piloting in these two schools, uh, getting feedback, uh, see how it works. Uh, see what, you know, working out the kinks, what, see what doesn't work. Uh, we get feedback to leadership. So that is a pilot program that we got going on right now at those two schools and, um, I'm hoping it goes well because I, I really, really like this tool. Um, there's a couple of school districts, uh, sister, sister school districts that are using CrisisGo. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. We've already talked about that. Alright, one of the biggest, uh, and this is, this is towards the end, um, uh, MSEP six mandated training. Uh, we did a active shooter, uh, course for our bus drivers. That is, that is not a standard for, uh, for school districts. Not all school districts do that. Um, when I, when I tell you I'm a big proponent of like safety training, um, we had, uh, training with our first student bus drivers and they just felt empowered. They felt they had safety information that they'd never had before. They had, uh, state statues that backed them, uh, of things that they can actually do in a crisis situation, uh, things that they didn't know about before. So we had that, uh, training, uh, at Truman and at the high school, uh, June 24th and it was well-received. Uh, we just recently, uh, went through, uh, BRAD training, which is our Behavioral Risk Assessment Team Training. Each and every one of our schools, uh, has a Behavioral Risk Assessment Team. So we got training from the Center for Education and Safety and, uh, the Cape Girardeau Superintendent, which he's, he's really good at what he does with, uh, behavioral threat assessments. So we just got some updated training for our team. Uh, and, and it's, it's really just looking at the pathway to violence. Getting information and intel that we need to, uh, respond. So that way we may not have to use law enforcement. It's getting our, our SROs, our social workers, our district leaderships, uh, together and working on, uh, creating solutions uh, so we don't, may not have to use, uh, any type of force or, or security or law enforcement, uh, looking those triggers. So, um, that's one of the things that we just had that training. It was really great and will really, really well received. Uh, Parents Night Out Safety Summit. Um, if you guys can please, um, research Michelle Gay, uh, Katie McPherson, Michelle Gay, uh, Safe and Sound for Schools. Uh, she'll be one of our keynote speakers, uh, Katie McPherson, Bark for Schools. We look at, so, so continuing on with this training, it's just getting information out. So I, I not only want to reach staff, I want to reach parents. Uh, I, I talk with parents all the time and just, just about safety things and safety, uh, procedures that we put in place. Um, so I always have an open-door policy and I'm very transparent when, when talking with parents. So I do that all the time. So this is a night out for them. Uh, we'll have, uh, guest speakers, we'll have roundtables, we'll have local law enforcement, uh, and we'll, we'll talk about things as far as social media threats, uh, social emotional health. Um, the following day, uh, we'll have those keynote speakers in several breakout, uh, breakout rooms for, um, all of our staff. Uh, we'll have it here at the high school. Um, and then, um, again, our Violence Prevention Academy. Next slide. Um, and I just want to read this. "A Safety-Minded Community Will Make All the Difference, Empowering Yourself with Knowledge." Uh, I not only want you to be safe and have the information, I want you to be able to react in a situation and I want you to take that knowledge, just not just in school, use it in your everyday life, um, because it's needed, uh, it's needed out here. So that's all I have unless you have any other questions for me.
Thank you, Terrell. I appreciate that and if there are any questions that come up, you can reach out to Terrell. Due to time, we were going to have Dr. McKenney give, uh, present the portion, his portion of the safety report during our regular meeting later this evening. So do I have a motion to adjourn board, adjourn Board Workshop 1557?
So moved.
Motion by Kathy?
Second.
Second by Megan. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Board Workshop 1557 is adjourned.
Sorry, Brian.